Good evening, everyone. This is Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner. I will do roll call for our Town Plan and Zone and Commission meeting and then turn it over to our Chair. Patrick Carrier.
Here.
Mike Grabulis.
Here.
Scott Halsted. Scott Halsted. All right, we'll come back to Scott. Liz Sanford.
Here.
Uh, Matt Hotvogner.
Here.
Ina St. James.
Here.
James Ratcliffe.
Here.
Matthew Bandle.
Here.
Uh, we were notified, uh, just a moment ago, Mike Walsh is not attending this evening. He has a conflict. And I'll try one more time, Scott Halsted.
Oh, we don't see him.
I don't.
He's muted.
No.
I think he's.
Yeah, he is.
Yeah. Hey, Scott, can you let us, I can see you. Can you hear us? Everybody else can hear me.
Hmm.
Scott Halsted. All right.
He's not on mute either.
No, I just noticed that.
Hear me now?
Yes.
There we go.
How about that?
That's all right. We're good.
It's somebody else's issue, not mine. It's usually my issue.
I do the same. I get it. No problem. All right, now we got everybody. Scott Halsted's here.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, this is Ina St. James, uh, current Chair of Town of Farmington Town Plan and Zoning Commission. Today is Monday, January twenty-third. We do not have any public meetings, so no notice needs to be read, Scott, and, uh, let's jump in. So the first agenda item is, uh, an application from Speech Path LLC. And who do we have?
Uh, we have the, um, owner, I believe, uh, looking to discuss her application. We have Ash, Ashley.
Yes, that's me. Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So we have your full application, um, and then we, the photos that you had shared. So if you can, uh, just explain to the commission briefly what you're looking to do, and then we can, uh, they'll ask any questions.
Yeah, um, so it's just a sign at the front of the building, um, that just will show Speech Path LLC, just like that. It's oval-shaped, black with white letters, um, so it matches the other signs in the front of the building. There's really, there's only two on the building right now. Um, but there are many businesses inside that building. Um, if you see the front, those three, kind of where the mouse was just at, those three windows right under that religion sign, that's my business right there. So I really want to differentiate my therapy, um, business from that, um, from the church. Nothing wrong with the church. Um, but I don't have any religious affiliation with the church. So that's, it's really important to me to, um, to make sure that I can differentiate my business from that. That's one of the reasons I really wanted the sign, um, as well as just to, just for people to help, help people find me.
Okay. So just on.
Should I explain, should I explain more? Sorry, this is the first time.
No. That's probably fine. And this is where, this is the location, right? So it'll be above that third window centered.
Yeah, my office is actually those three windows right there, but he kind of said, he, so Sign Pro is who I'm working with, and that's where he put, um, that's where he put it. It seemed to make the most sense, so. Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, let's, uh, turn it over to you for questions. Uh, Patrick, you go first.
Yeah, very straightforward. I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. Mike?
No questions. Thank you.
All right, Scott?
No questions. Thank you.
Matt?
No questions. Thanks.
How about you, Liz?
Seems very appropriate. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. James?
No questions. Nice job, first timer.
But you're.
All right, and Matt? Me, Matthew?
Matt Bandle.
We lost him, I think.
We lost him.
I did fall off the call.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is gonna be one of those meetings.
Oh, okay.
So just, I guess a silly question. So I, nothing specific. Oh, is that Matt?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Uh, perfect timing, uh, Matt, I don't know if you had a chance to, uh, hear the applicant about the sign. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
He's still.
No, he's not. Okay.
Yeah, he's coming back.
He, where is he? Oh, there he is. Okay, he is, have his audio. Uh, Matt Bandle, do you have any, uh, questions or comments regarding the sign application?
No, nothing for me. Sorry, my computer, uh, did something. I'm back though.
No, no problem. Seems to be in the universe tonight. You're good.
So are you the owner of the building?
I am. Yep. I'm the owner and I'm the only provider.
Only. Oh, of the business, but of the, of the building, you're a tenant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, sorry. No.
No, no, it's okay.
The building, the owner of the business. Yep.
Your landlord knows about this?
Yeah, yeah. So the application, your application, he had to sign it as well as the letter of authorization for Sign Pro. He signed that as well.
Thank you. I, I missed that.
So, so Garrett, no, no, I don't think anybody asked me that already. Uh, Garrett Fishman is the owner. Uh, actually, I think his father is the owner of the building. Um, and he approved the, uh, the sign. It's really the colors. It's the black with the white letters was their only, um, I know that it's called something fancy. I don't remember what the phrase is, but it's something landlord something. I don't know. Um, okay, I'm a speech therapist. I'm a speech therapist. I don't know what all this is, but anyway, so yeah, whatever the landlord rules are, or the, whatever the phrase is called, he, uh, um, was black, was a black sign with white letters. That's what he wants. And so he, he gave his stamp of approval for that and that was it. So.
Excellent. Thank you for, uh, coming in front of us and, um, no one had any questions. So it sounds like, uh, we are ready to vote on your application. All right, Commissioners. Commissioners, we need a motion and a second, please.
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make the motion to approve the signed application for Speech Path LLC located at eleven Melrose Drive, Suite 102.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
Abstentions? No, you are all set, so you'll be hearing from the town staff. And thanks for calling in.
Yeah, we'll follow up. Thank you, Ashley.
Oh, thank you. So do I just sign out now?
Yeah, you're welcome to log off. You're, you're.
Oh, great. Thank you so much. Thank you for, thank you for all that, thank you for all that you guys do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, uh, next application is, uh, from, uh, FPKLC Farmington Pizza. That is being moved to future date?
Uh, future date ideally February thirteenth. I was informed at about four-thirty this afternoon that the applicant will not be in attendance. He's on a flight out of state.
Okay.
And won't be returning till the end of the week. So.
Okay.
We can table. It'll just be tabled. No, no action necessary.
Great. We like it?
Yeah.
Uh, sorry. Yes, horrible, but okay. Next, sorry. Uh, next few items, we need to accept some applications. Uh, the first one is an application from Harold Wilson. And, uh, we need a motion in a second to accept the application, please.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I make a motion to accept the application for Harold Elm, Elm, I'm sorry, Harold M. Wilson at sixty Y Eli, sixty-one Eli Road for special permit for clear cutting in a ridgeline protection area and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of February thirteenth of two thousand twenty-three.
Second?
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, good. Thank you. We're good there. All right, next one is an application, um, from Carrier Holdings LLC. Again, we're just accepting it. We need a motion in a second.
Yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by Carrier Holdings LLC for one-two-four-six Dominics Court for special permit for blasting, for blasting associated with Dominics Court's roadway, utilities and foundations, and schedule public hearing with a recommended hearing date of February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Liz Sanford, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, we're good. And the last new business item is an application from BB Development LLC. We need a motion in.
Oh, yeah, Patrick Carrier, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application by BB Development LLC at three-sixty-eight Plainville Avenue for special permit and site plan approval for gas station with convenience store and schedule a public hearing with a recommended hearing date of February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you.
Liz Sanford, I second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're good. All right. Planners report.
Planners report. We are moving right along today.
We are.
Um, Planners report, I have included in our agenda information and discussion about land use training that Yukon Clear is providing their land use academy in conjunction with the CT Bar Association. Um, you'll recall in January, uh, no, it was March of twenty-twenty-two, we did, uh, some basic land use training with Bob D. Crescendo. We had, um, picked up an evening and included TPZ, ZBA, and Inland Wetlands, and Bob D. had done a presentation for us on land use training. Some of this is required, uh, with new statutory requirements for, uh, it's biannual training. So yes, you folks have already had some of this. Um, I did want to point out the fair and affordable housing because Bob's presentation, uh, spoke specifically to our land use requirements with processing applications for all of the boards, the Wetlands, TPZ, and ZBA. Uh, talked about predisposition conflicts, et cetera. Uh, but he, we did not get to a point where we were talking about fair and affordable housing. So of the three, um, while the content of parts one and two have likely been covered for most of you, the third one has not, and also ties to a certain extent what we're talking about from a moratorium standpoint. So, um, would be nice if you can attend. The benefit of attending live is obviously being able to participate in the question and answer. Um, but I did speak to, uh, exchanged emails with Dave Dixon and at Yukon Clear, he's the director, interim director, and he confirmed that these will, assuming technology cooperates, these will be recorded and these will be posted to Clear's website for viewing at a later date and time, you know, understanding that four to five-thirty will cut into most of your workdays, um, and certainly understand that. But for those of you that have a little bit of flexibility and want to participate live, you might find, uh, it worthy of your time. Um, I have heard, I think I've heard all three gentlemen present. I think you'll find them very knowledgeable. Um, some a little more entertaining and colorful than others, but, uh, nonetheless, very knowledgeable and, um, astute in these, uh, topics. So the link is, um, is part of the PDF. I believe the link was active as part of the PDF that I forwarded you. If you're having trouble with the link, let me know and I can just forward you the email directly. Um, if it's not popping from the PDF that was included in the, uh, items distributed. Does anybody have any questions on any of this?
Thank you for sharing.
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask, this is Liz, I was just gonna ask, so this is on Zoom. It's not in person, correct?
Okay.
Just clear.
Yep, nope, correct. So even, even the, the Thursdays, so the four to five-thirty would be, um, virtual, but the opportunity to ask questions live, um, exactly how they're gonna do it, I don't, I don't know, but um, there will be the opportunity for inter, you know, interaction. Um, but all of that would be captured in the recording that's posted. Anyway, it's just if you had a follow-up, you know, a question, if you had a question that someone else didn't ask, then there wouldn't be the opportunity to necessarily get that addressed immediately, but we could always forward it to Bob D. If there was something that needed clarification.
Uh, Shannon, so how, when, when do we need to register? Like, is there a, a time limit or something? So I, I make that class. I just, I'm not sure until probably the week of.
Yeah, no, I don't believe there's any time limit for registering for the, the class, Patrick. You should be able to go ahead and do that at your, uh, at your convenience. I don't think there's a drop dead date.
So like fifteen minutes before, an hour before, doesn't matter as long as you, you just go to that?
As far as, I mean, you could always register. Again, it's free, so I think it's, you could always register, and then if you can't make it, you can't make it. Um, I don't know that you'd be, you know, you might wanna, I don't know that fifteen minutes before, I, I don't, that I don't know, but you know, a day or two before, you could probably wait that long and, and then be able to still register.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. And you can, I've registered for, you can register as a block or you can register for them individually.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's great.
So. Um, and so then we're gonna jump right into our new favorite topic.
Yes.
Of our moratorium. So I guess a little bit of update. We have people bouncing in and out of here. Phone keeps, uh, beeping.
Okay.
Um, so at any rate, um, so the moratoriums, uh, their effective date was last Friday. They were, the moratoriums were published in the newspaper last Thursday. The effective date last Friday. The appeal period, should anyone choose to, runs for fifteen days after the notice was published, but I don't foresee, at this point, don't foresee that happening. We've had a few inquiries, but nothing, um, overly complex. Um, I did what I thought I would do, um, and was included in the agenda review and then also forwarded, uh, separately as a link to everyone. I've just started a SharePoint file. I thought that would be best to have one repository for all information that's exchanged with respect to, um, this, what I'm referring to is just a residential zoning review. It's kind of an all-encompassing.
Sure.
Not necessarily affordable. It might be affordable, but there's other things I think we're going to, to look at. So I've just, how I chose to title it, um, and we'll put everything in to that one, um, one SharePoint link and then in different folders and whatnot, so that hopefully try to keep us organized and, um, and not confusing for everybody. Um, I did include Farmington's Affordable Housing Plan in there so that we had that at our fingertips. And then there was a folder that had, uh, the inclusionary zoning, some information that Garrett had found for us. Um, kind of a four-one-one on what's inclusionary zoning, how it works. Um, based on my review of it, it seemed to have more pros than cons about inclusionary zoning, which we're, we're gonna get, you know, I'm gonna try to sprinkle this with, um, differing points of view so that we can start to see pros and cons of all the options that are available to us, and then from that, start to synthesize what might be best for Farmington. Um, and in there, there were links to, there was a Massachusetts Inclusionary Zoning Toolkit, and there was a, uh, worksheet. Uh, one of these was a, a worksheet as well to start to, you know, as you're starting to read and go through documents, then take a look and and kind of start to see where you think you fall in your thoughts with respecting to some of these, these questions as far as, you know, what's, what do you think our need is for Farmington and is from a program structure? There's mandatory and voluntary, and there's pros and cons with all of these and the different types of ownership or rental or both and project size threshold. Some of thing, these things are gonna be perhaps a little more critical for us to start to get to a consensus on, um, than, than others, and, uh, you know, the percent affordability for us and this, the structure, choosing.
Matt lost his wifi. He was going back and forth.
Oh, he's going back and forth. He was back on.
Yeah.
So, um, so some of these are just, you know, tools that we can start to, to use, whether we use them, you know, formally or, or informally. Um, and then also included was a folder that said, has light touch density, is light touch development in it. And that, um, was from a webinar that I had had the opportunity to listen into, and it included the link for the webinar itself. If you wanted to listen to it, it was done over a lunch hour, so it was certainly, you know, manageable. Um, and then their PowerPoint presentation, which I actually wanna drill into separately, cause the, it, it was like, I felt like I was speed dating in that light touch development webinar. Uh, he, a very, um, well-spoken speaker, very, very fast, very fast-paced, and I'd like to go back and, and actually kind of freeze frame it and read those slides kind of side by side, um, cause I think there's perhaps additional good information embedded in there that we can, I can go to their parent website and start to get additional information for us. Um,
So we know, okay, so with every meeting, Shannon, we're gonna have a work session? And how, for how long? Half an hour or depends on the meeting, like what?
I think it depends on the meeting, and I think it depends on the dialogue. So this is, this isn't meant for me to talk to you. It's meant for me to talk with you. Um, and so the idea is to the extent that you've had the opportunity to review and look at information, and I know I got, um, a handful of questions from a commission member that I can certainly touch on. But if there's other kind of general questions, you know, that's, you know, we're gonna take it, read it, we'll talk about it, um, and we'll go, go from there, and then with the intent of trying to get to a point of some type of consensus of yes, we think we want inclusionary zoning, or no, we don't. Yes, we think a fee and lieu program is appropriate, or we don't. We like a light-touch development approach better. Okay, and then how are we? Once we get to that level, then it's, we gotta drill into the next level of how are we implementing it and what does it look like for Farmington? And then from there, then Garrett and I can start to draft regulations. Um, and Garrett's, Garrett's on the phone so that he's listening to this live as well. Um.
So are those the only options?
They don't have to be.
Okay.
They don't have to be, but I, I do want it contained to within that residential umbrella, right? So if there's other zoning regulations, somebody's like, hey, I think we've got a part, problem with signage.
Right.
That's great, but we're gonna tackle that later. We're gonna deal with signage later. Like, if there's other things that fall outside the zone, the umbrella of residential.
Yeah.
And, and specifically kind of how it ties to affordability. Um, I think we need to just set it aside for now, but anything under the residential umbrella and ideally it ties back to the Affordable Housing Plan and the objectives and strategies that are outlined in the, the last couple of pages of the Affordable Housing Plan. And it doesn't have to be a direct connection. It can be a loose, you know, a loose connection. Um, so, but that's.
How many sections? You know, we all have binders, right?
Yeah.
We all got binders and, uh, you know, unfortunately, you know, maybe I'm just speaking for myself, but, uh, I reference the binder when you tie in an application to a specific section.
Certainly.
I unfortunately don't remember everything.
No.
Uh, so thank you for doing that. Should we look at our binder to what we have today? And.
I think.
Those are gonna, that's too much time.
I don't, well, and I don't, cause I think it's gonna be more overarching than that.
Okay.
So I think initially it's, my thought was to start with the Affordable Housing Plan, to read that and the objectives and strategies.
Yeah.
If you can't, so again, I understand everybody's got a limited amount of time, right? And so but as we talked about, there's gonna be a little bit of rolling upper sleeves and putting in a little bit of extra, um, in order to muscle through this. So the affordable, the front end of the Affordable Housing Plan provides the basis for where we are.
Mm-hmm.
And the kind of the pros and cons of where, where Farmington is today.
Yeah.
The objectives and strategies provide that next step of, okay, how do we go from where we are to making an improvement, whether that's hitting the ten percent or not? And I believe in there, they talk about, right, there's the affordable housing that counts towards our affordable housing percentage.
Yeah.
And then there's, um, what they term naturally affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Which are some of the apartments or homes within Farmington that don't hit those or hit a lower price point to, that would naturally, um, let them qualify as perhaps affordable as being eighty percent of the median family income. But for whatever reason, um, because of the age of the facility or just whatever, it is not counted. There are no deed restrictions on it. And if they're within the absence of the deed restriction in anything, I think prior to nineteen ninety, in the current Affordable Housing Regulation in the Connecticut General Statute, it cannot count towards our ten percent.
Yeah.
So with that, then that's fine. And part of it, too, is do we, I'm gonna say, do we care? We care, but I think both are important. So I think there are strategies that can be put in place. Um, some of that, like the apartment regulation that I mentioned in the agenda review.
Yeah.
You know, is that something that we want to start to take a look at and remove the relative and domestic help requirement? And there's pros and cons to that, right? And BR zoning regulations, I've had a number of um, property owners that have small offices that are more like homes that have been converted to offices. And well, now they can't get a second floor tenant. They'd like to go back to residential, but technically our BR zone doesn't allow mixed use.
Mm-hmm.
So does that allow for an appropriate utilization in a limited, you know, do I think we should allow like apartments in every BR zone?
Right.
Perhaps, perhaps not, but we could figure out like a limitation that makes sense. Those would be more naturally affordable.
Sure.
Naturally occurring affordable housing.
Yeah.
Um.
Do we have numbers? Like, can we quantify like these two, for example, like the BR zone or the apartments like that? I think we looked at some of these apartments before, right?
We can. Yep, I think we've got, um, for the most part, we would have special per, most of the apartments that were certainly that we've been getting lately, um, would have required special permits, so we could. And then, um, the BR zone, we can start to take a look at what may or may not be applicable there. Um, and then I've got Desegregate Connecticut is going to come in in February. And then my thought was for Nancy Parent to come in.
That's right.
Um, I haven't had an opportunity to talk with Nancy yet, so that's why I hadn't outlined it in the agenda review specifically yet. Um, but I'm also going to add to our SharePoint site the town's housing code, um, cause that shows up. So if we could do a little run-through, so Farmington's webpage, town charter and ordinance. And you go to the town code of Farmington. And section twelve is the Cooperative Housing Trust Fund. And section thirty-one are, are housing agencies, but I can, I can pull that out, those, those documents out and put them in as PDF files for everyone to start to read. I need to reread those as well myself.
It's been a while.
Um, but those are really tied to, uh, what Nancy Parent does. That's important for us only to the, well, on multiple fronts, um, On multiple fronts, um but if we were to adopt a fee and lieu program. As part of an inclusionary zoning, then those fees. Would go to that Housing Trust Fund. To be utilized by the Housing Authority. Great, so. So there's a few layers to this, so.
We, I think we need to like do a basic level set. I, it would be awful, okay, I, choice of words is horrible today. It would be, it would be awful if, you know, after six months, you know what I mean, not. I don't wanna see nothing happen cuz we all care about our town and what we're doing, we voted unanimously, right, to do this. It's I, to me, six months is not a lot of time, so. That's why I was asking you if it's like half hour each meeting, should we prep for each meeting, cuz. We don't have a lot of time.
Well, no, that's why, so. Right, so that's the agenda and Agenda Review, and so yes, I do intend to have it on for every meeting. Um, we've got the luxury of this meeting, and I think what might be helpful too is to make sure that we. Run through everybody tonight so that uh get thoughts, cuz I know. I've exchanged a couple of emails and um we can get that information shared. But. I intend to have this on every meeting for the next six months.
That's what I wanted to hear.
And I intend to have. An Agenda Review item of some level of detail, it'll vary. And. Right now, I think we're in an information gathering. Phase, right, we've gotta do this for a little bit um to get everybody on the same playing field and understanding. And then. The next phase is gonna be, okay, of this stuff that we've read the last. Two or two and a half months, so sometime in March, so be like, okay, well. What do we think we want to start to take? In directions we wanna start to go. March is gonna be a little busier for us permitting wise, I know um already, so. I'm trying to do. You know, again, get people in Desegregate Connecticut, I'm trying to get in in February, I'll try to get Nancy in in February. March, we might be a little bit. Lighter on this discussion and then get back in it hard in April, but it won't be. It it will stay on the agenda. Okay. So.
I like what you outlined, yeah, let's, that's definitely make sure we hear from everyone. Besides Matt, I think everyone was okay, but uh online Patrick. You have questions, comments, do you think what Shannon described? How we're gonna uh attack this, does that work for you, suggestions, go for it.
Uh, yeah, works for me, um, obviously, there's a lot of information, I started reading through it briefly, um, and I intend on. Reading through all of it, um, you know, as. In between meetings, so I can be prepared, but yeah, right now, I don't have much to say, I'm more listening and just taking everything in.
That's fair. Mike Rabulis. All right, Scott.
I did get through some of the material, I didn't get, I got a little intimidated by the light touch, if that's what it was called, stuff is a lot of detail in there, but. I have a couple of questions on the Affordable Housing Plan that we have now. One of them, so it's a five year plan. What does that mean in terms, does it have any impact on what we're doing here? I know we're partway into it. What happens at the end of that five years, is it just get reviewed?
So um similar to our plan of conservation and development, the um. Legislature put in a requirement that we, all the municipalities implement an affordable housing plan. And stated that it must be updated every. Five years. As part, so it it comes direct, i- it's eight dash, so eight dash thirty G is in George is the. The portion of the regulation where the developers can come in and. And submit their application pretty much anywhere in town, eight dash thirty J. As in Jack is the portion where requiring the Affordable Housing Plan. A- at this particular point in time, I don't believe there's anything um punitive if for not. Implementing goals or our variety of of things. Um, Garrett, feel free to chime in if I'm, if you know otherwise. And uh, so, but we do have the obligation every five years to update it. And and again, for me, it was understanding. Uh, that this was in place and with the. Housing, the particularly the apartment housing developments that have come in, the shift in. Where we were a- and. Wanting the opportunity to take a look and and say, okay. What do we wanna do, are there different things we wanna put in place to? Try to get some of this housing balanced out.
Thanks, Shannon, um, the other question's kind of a nitpicky thing, but. Got the wheels turning a little bit, there's where it goes through the current affordable housing stock that we have. It mentions deeded. Housing that some of these projects are given like thirty or forty year deeds. Those like even close to coming up or would have any impact on what we're talking about or numbers?
Yes. Yes, I'd have to go and take a look at that, pull the list, some of them um are in perpetuity. And some of them are limited, and the deed restriction does not run in perpetuity. So, yeah, so there are some that are currently listed and qualified affordable housing that are now going. Have the potential to come off this list, and that's. Not unique to Farmington, that's pretty much across the state of Connecticut.
Yeah, I guess it just for me, it was like a, how aggressive do we need to be in some of the decision making we make, if that number's gonna drop? More significantly, just, it's another factor in my head is all.
Yes, I'm more concerned that we try to do. What's appropriate for Farmington. Than to just chase the number, Farmington's already well ahead of some of our neighboring communities. So, but yeah, I mean, it is, it's a factor. But I don't want that to be an overriding factor for everybody.
Fair enough. Yeah, I guess the materials I looked at, particularly that checklist you put up before Shannon, I thought that was really helpful and maybe. Like you said, a good roadmap for us. Um, but I I uh like the other two commissioners who spoke for me, um. I need to dig into this more, I I just. Sort of did a cursory look at it this weekend.
No, I understand, no, there's a lot of, lot of, lot of ground to cover, I get it, so.
Thank you, Scott, I, so Shannon, a question on what Scott mentioned, the Affordable Housing Plan that we adopted in twenty twenty one. So is it possible that after all the work that we do, we may have to modify it?
Yeah, yes, um unlike the P O C D, so if we were to do a project that does not. Whether the town does or an applicant is doing a project that doesn't align directly with the P O C D. I don't, i- if that P O C D, technically, the P O C D is supposed to be updated, then the zone text amendments and zone change and all that. I don't believe this. This doesn't operate in necessarily the exact same fashion, and again, I think if we're. If you take a look at all the objectives and strategies, I'm kind of hard pressed to think some of what we do doesn't apply to. At least one or two of those objectives and strategies. So. Again, I think we're fine as long if there's a. Whether it's a direct or a loosely tangential. Um, connection. To that, it it's meant as a guiding document, um. It's the first time, not only for us, but the entire state of Connecticut's doing this. Uh, I think the fact that we're even, you know, trying to take this step and take a pause and take a look at everything as um. As a credit to all of you, so I, you know, I think we're, I think we're fine.
And uh, good questions, guys, and Matt H, you're next.
Sure, um, yeah, obviously support the the moratorium and. Taking a portion of the meeting to, you know, discuss all this is really important, right? Um, you know, for me. The, just on the Affordable Housing Plan, I, so I was around then, but I. I assume, right, we had a lot of public meetings and public input. For that plan, right, so I was thinking about this before is. To me, it feels like we've done a lot of this step, at least as a towner, and a few of my fellow commissioners here were on that, right, where. We kind of talked with the community about strategies and the best way to implement, or the best ideas to implement it. For me now, these next six months is. What parts of these? Five sections of objectives and strategies do we wanna tackle? And how best to tackle, and which ones do we start with? I think the inclusionary zoning is probably the, I don't know, quote unquote, mediaist part, part of it, uh, it is, for lack of a better way to describe it, so. I think starting there uh makes sense, cuz. You know, that one does really have a direct impact on the number of units, right, if. So, um, so, yeah, that. Again, that's just my general thoughts is. You know, I I'm not sure what time to redo the Affordable Housing Plan, I think everyone spent a lot of time and resources on on that already, right, so. Uh, I I I agree, Shan, I think with what you're saying, at least. Um, you know, kind of using that as a little bit of a guide makes sense.
Right, and unfortunately, so you're right, Matt, we did have uh community outreach, um. At the time, of course, we were still. Cuz this was adopted in July of twenty twenty one, so at that point, we were. Kind of just one year into COVID, right, at the time, cuz we started then. You know, January-ish twenty twenty one with planning meetings and whatnot. So we were just one year into COVID at that point, so everything was Zoom, so we were. Everyone was well acquainted with the Zoom platform. Uh, unfortunately, I'd say the community engagement on this matter was limited, um, and we had sent it out to. All our land use boards, all of our um. Uh, the Housing Authority, uh, our um racial and equity committee. Senior Center, et cetera, so we did a couple of different, tried a couple of different approaches. The uh. Community participation was somewhat limited overall, um. So, but just so you folks know, so when we do this, so my intent is again to try to give you. And myself. Information from. Different sources. Reliable sources, but differing sources and differing points of view, right, so Desegregate Connecticut's gonna have one point of view. The webinar, the light touch density webinar that's sponsored by Home Builders Association, that's one, that's gonna be a slightly different point of view. Um, I was on the phone today with a a planner from. Uh, CROG, our Capital Region Council of Government, who's an advisory. Body to us. Um, as part of that conversation, I let them know if they wanted to come speak to the commission. We'd welcome that opportunity and get their point of view on this. So. There, it's gonna be kind, again, synthesizing all of this, so. A a little bit is to what makes sense for for Farmington, we have sample regulations, that'll be one of the next steps of and things to share. Uh, I think Garrett's found stuff from Stanford and. I can't remember some of the other, so again.
I think it's like ten, there are twelve-ish towns, and then I'll also be able to provide a spreadsheet that compares all of those. Towns regulations to Farmington as well, and you can also look at their median income, their population density and things like that.
So, so there, yeah, so Garrett's doing some of that research for us, thank you, Garrett, for clarifying. So. So, yeah, so that's um. That's that part, and then. Obviously, when we get so. While this isn't, i- it's a public meeting, the public can, anyone from the public can call in and listen, this part isn't necessarily. Public participatory, uh unless there's somebody with. An overriding um. Background, planning, land development, et cetera, that can offer. This, these resources to the commission to help synthesize uh information. When we get to the point, if we're going to implement a. Code or regulation change. That's when the public hearings would take place and the public, you know, the all of usual public notifications would take place. Prior to any. Regulation change. Uh, if it happens to be a town ordinance change. That would be um as a recommendation from. The Town Plan and Zoning Commission to the Town Council. And public hearings are held with Town Council prior to any. Uh, ordinance change. So there, there absolutely. Will be public, the opportunity for public participation. And certainly, if you're talking to folks and you're you're hearing a repeated concern about something. I'm not saying we wait until the very end when we're looking at regulations. Um, it's just. I wanna try to keep this as focused as possible now, but certainly, if if you're hearing repeated concerns, then those should be brought forth. Um, as we're moving along. Matt, do you have anything else?
No, that 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 makes sense, the the. Your point on public particip- participation is noted and and. As you said earlier, like the town had the opportunity to talk through this. A couple summers ago, right, so. The plans on paper and it's been there for a few months now, so. Now it's, you know, in my mind, figuring out. What, what if anything to kind of do, to do with it, so that that'll make sense to me.
Thank you, Matt, um, hey Liz. What are you thinking?
Uh, well, I will say, as I started the scrolling through, I I kind of got in down the rabbit hole of the APA. Um, database, which is got a lot in there. And um I get, the more I learned, uh, the more I learned that I don't know a lot. And that I've got a lot to look through and read through and and process too, you know, kind of. Go through all the different um things and uh in in. Um, couple of things that came to mind, I, our. Town Affordable Housing Plan, I I like that it is easy and accessible to to look at and to understand. Um, I've got, I didn't know so much about our own very own Housing Authority and Housing Committees and things, so. You know, kind of looking at some of of that. I I wanna do some more research about that. I'm intrigued about the whole. Cutting parking spaces for density and and and. Maybe trading off and then also the fees in lieu of, I I'm kind of. As I say, the more I learn, the more I learn, I have a lot more to learn. And uh, I I did find it interesting, I, as a little personal aside, I was reading the, I knew it was the Valley Press this weekend. And there was our article about our our moratorium, there was an article about Simsbury. And it was very telling that um we had, uh, I can't remember, our figure of seven point three or something percent affordable. And Simsbury was four point three, something like that, so. And they were, it was an article about uh potential um apartments and. And that made me think, well, at least we are there. We aren't last in line, put it that way.
Aren't last, no, we're not.
We're not last in line, so, um, I I actually, this is one of the things I wanted to get involved with, so I'm I'm glad we're addressing it. But it is, it is a dense topic and it is um one that uh I'm gonna be doing a lot of reading on, so. I don't have specific questions now, nothing that I can put my finger on.
That's fine.
So that's where I stand.
Okay, awesome, thank you, Liz. Uh, how about you, James?
Um, I am uh on board with uh with pretty much everything that everybody has said here, um, you know, getting to to number one, I mean. The expectation was that I think that we were gonna add the tack this on to. Um, every meeting that we have, um, especially knowing that we uh we we cut this to six months, so we know we've got, we've got a time crunch here. Uh, but to Matt's point, I think, uh, you know, making sure that we're not reinventing the wheel, we've got a ton of continuity between the, between the the commission that. Um, that established this Affordable Housing Plan. Um, you know, with a couple carryover commissioners, obviously, um, you know, Shannon was, you were involved in some, to some extent, as the Assistant Town Planner. Um, so I think that the, you know, some of the, this is a good roadmap that provides us with a lot to talk about and a lot to potentially. Um, add to our, add to our plan, um, or at least put into action. Um, so, um, a lot to read, a lot to dig into, uh, but, you know, fully on board with with everybody.
Okay, thank you. And uh, Matt, B?
Yep, I'm sorry, uh, I'm back now, uh, so I echo everyone else's sentiment, uh, there's definitely a lot, I was looking. The knowledge base for the APAs, sixty-five links. The knowledge base for the APA is sixty-five links. Which link is fifteen pages, so essentially, we're gonna have a master's class in APA Inclusionary Zoning. Which, you know, is welcome. Um. I did, the only question I did have was uh. Regarding inclusionary zoning, I'm sure it's somewhere in the text, uh, but I'm gonna ask anyways. Incentive versus inclusionary, is it all or nothing? You have to use one or the other? Is there a piecemeal approach where you could use a little bit of each?
Um, well, I gotta pun, so not pun, but Gar- Garrett, do you have more background on this yet? I've read some, but if you've got something to share, I'm gonna defer to you, otherwise I'll jump in.
It's, it's a little bit of both, it's kind of similar, uh, nevermind, not gonna use that, um. So it it it, they're similar terms, um, the. Goal of the inclusionary housing is to get affordable housing, incentivized housing just means you're usually giving an incentive to a developer. Um, to include. Uh, additional units that are affordable, so this can either be um additional you, uh, density bonuses for including affordable units. Um. Or or you can just pay the fee, the inclusionary zoning fee and still get the density bonus, it just means that your fee is higher. Um. Same same as that, some. Mistiles that have adopted inclusionary zoning, you either have the you, the additional units or you pay the fee. Um. Not, not you get the additional units and you give it market rate as long as you pay an additional fee. Uh, but but sometimes I've all have adopted that, that as long as you pay the fee. Doesn't matter, I mean, the fee is different depending if they're affordable or not. Um. But you can pay a fee to get the density bonus that goes into the Housing Trust Fund, and then that can be used to build affordable units elsewhere.
Okay. I appreciate that. Um, like I said, there's a a lot to to consume with this, uh, but I look forward to. Getting to learn all this.
Excellent, thank you. I'm very excited that everyone at least like. Clicked on things, right? Maybe looked at some items, because it is a lot to process. Shannon, I was thinking of um kind of where Matt. Maybe was going, but um. So, you know, we're, obviously, we do this, we come here every two weeks, um, we get better and better at this. But to the general public, unless. You're somehow impacted, like people don't really know what we do, and I, it sounds horrible, but. Do you think um? When CJ does his community letter or whatever, could there be a blurb that this work is happening? People are welcome to. Dial in? I just feel like we need to. I don't want to create a prob- not a problem, but like, we're obviously not rewriting the Affordable. Uh, housing. Plan that we have, but I just wanna just kind of keep. It's not even engagement, because who knows, probably nobody will call in. Is there any way to just? Remind people besides what they read in the client? That this is going on?
So the winter newsletter, uh, the deadline for the winter newsletter is this Friday.
Oh, oh, perfect.
So timing, yeah, right? Um. So I could. Draft something and share with you.
Do you have time?
No, I ca- I know, it's just trying to figure out. Um. Exactly, well, exactly how to word it appropriately so that. Folks understand that, yes, you know, they're welcome, and that if there is a specific. Concern or thought, again, to share it, but there's no. Again, at the time that there's an actual regulation change, then there would be a public hearing, so it's just kind of figuring out. Um. That appropriate wording, so that. Um.
I think, I think we should do something.
No, I understand, I I understand, um, it's just figuring out how to. Word it appropriately, um. So that the right expectation is set, right? So if we put it in the newsletter and they think, oh, hey, I I got twenty people calling in.
Right, well, not, yeah.
We don't have. Time to really process. Twenty people with five minutes worth of comments that. May or may not be directly germane to what we're trying to accomplish. So it's just. Um, making sure that that expectation is set appropriately, so and maybe it's just that they're reaching out to Garrett or I if they've got. Something to to share and let them know that they're welcome to listen in on these meetings and these discussions.
Is there a way to, I'm thinking of like NPR, don't ask me why, in my little brain, but uh. Or even a way where the people can send comments in or? That logs it in or, oh.
The easiest would be via email to either Garrett or myself, quite honestly, by the time, if if I have IT set up another email. One of us is gonna have to go check it anyhow, so whether it's coming right into my email feed or I've gotta go check a different one, it doesn't.
Okay.
Really matter. Um.
That would not be, I know, it's a good, it is a lot more work for you, I I I don't know, I just feel like we should offer it. Whatever happens, happens, but uh, yeah.
Uh, uh, let me see if I can kick something around, I'll consider getting something in for the newsletter.
Okay.
And see what that looks like.
Do you guys agree about including something? Something, I know it's very technical.
Me, uh, I'm always more in favor of more transparency and rather wait to put something on paper. And then having people comment when it's very far down the road, I think it's always better to get it before we start heading down a. A path, um, again, with. You know, whatever update we want to do on paper. I'd be shocked, listen, I'd be shocked if twenty people. Showed up at a meeting to give public comment, I mean, that'd be great. Like, I I think that's a good problem, if twenty people show up at a meeting. And they're interested in this topic, that would be great, so. I I don't think that's a bad thing, I think that's a good thing. Again, I don't think that's a high probability, though.
Right. Okay.
I'm, I'm all for transparency, but but as Shannon said, you know, certainly we don't want twenty people showing up at a meeting. When there's no public comment. And. I I think if the, if the wording is proper, where, you know, if you have any questions or concerns about this, it goes to. The Planning Office, but, you know. We've all sat through meetings where there's, you know, public comment that takes up an hour and a half, and it's gonna kind of. Get away.
It can be repetitive. Yeah, it can, it can be, it can be repetitive at times, so. Yeah.
Can I respond?
Yes.
I I I very much agree, like, we, we have work to do here. But for those who weren't around to hear. About what the town thinks about affordable housing. And we're two years removed from that. It'd be nice to at least give people the opportunity. To share their thoughts, maybe not every meeting. And I'm not saying. Two hours every meeting of public comment, yeah, that that's gonna slow us down, and I very much agree with that, and and so. Maybe, again, we get further down the road, maybe that's when there's an opportunity for public comment, and maybe we're saying the same thing here, I just think. You know, not waiting till the end when it's sort of that final. Here's the ordinance, or here's the the regulation, and it's just sort of one shot at it.
Well, I I agree with you, my only concern is like, you know, like Shannon had mentioned in the beginning. Shannon, is there opportunity for public comment in this, or, you know, in in coming here to a meeting? And meeting with us, I thought you had mentioned that, you know, it's not necessarily like a back and forth between the public and the commission. It's more. You know, if somebody with expertise were to come in and and speak to us.
Right. That's how this is set up as a work session, so if there was going to be. Public, so we can, I can get something in the newsletter, and I think the best avenue then is for. If there is a. Resident that has concerns or comments or general inquiry. The best bet is gonna be to have them. Contact either Garrett or myself. Um. And then we can synthesize that information and disseminate it to the commission. And it'd be an attachment, right? We can just have whatever public, you know, public comments received to date and. Have that uh synthesized for you folks to review at your leisure then. Um.
It works for me, that makes sense.
And then um. I- i- if through that, then there is somebody that. I guess qualifies as a subject matter. E- expert, uh, uh, and I'm using that term kind of loosely, um. But again, as I had stated, somebody that has. That background in order to provide additional resource to the commission. Then certainly, um, we could have them in as a guest. Uh, speaker to present uh to the commission, similar to what we'll do at Desegregate Connecticut. At that point, then, um. If we get to this and we're in. May or June or coming into, you know, in May, we think in June it's appropriate to say. Have a public hearing, if we're going to have public comment at large, then it that really should be noticed as a public hearing. Um. And not just random, you know, an opportunity for individuals to just. Come in because they happen to see it in the newsletter, we should really follow the statutory requirements for a public hearing and and soliciting that public comment. We could do that then in June. Prior to the moratorium ending to get, you know, uh, do a small presentation on. What we've done over the last four to five months. Is there any other, you know, anyone from the public have any? Comments or questions for the commission? And this is kind of the general direction that we're intending to go. Um. So we could do something like that again, you know, at at one of the meetings in June or then more even in July.
Okay.
So.
I- is anyone against putting something in the winter newsletter?
No, I, you know, I think it's a good strategy, I think the biggest thing is people are busy. And they probably would pay attention if they knew it was going on, so I think if we try to get the word out, right, that's part of transparency. And then give them an avenue to voice or write. Um, what they think, and then, you know, we can, if there's a way for us, like through Shannon, or. Um, if there's, you know, if we could see what the the comments that the people are, you know, that the people have, I think that's a. I think that's the best way to go forward, I think.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I I agree with Patrick, I think we have a vehicle, we have. Get it out there, we let people know it's going on, and this is the way to co- this is the way to. Ask questions, and then I like the idea of maybe in in June or closer to the end. We we, if we feel we need it, we get out there and have a public hearing and then say, please come and. Come and speak.
Yep.
Okay, okay, awesome.
Okay, um, and I guess too, the same goes for um, for all of you, as you're going through and looking at information and. Everybody does, e- everybody works through stuff differently, highlighting notes, jotting notes, whatever. As you're coming across something, if you have a question. Um, don't feel like, please don't feel like you have to wait till the next meeting. Um, please, I I'd actually prefer, as you're going through stuff. And jotting notes. If it's on a, if you could. If it ties to a specific document, if you could let us know, like, refer. Give us the document reference, you know, the document reference in page, and hey, I had a question on this, it was saying this, and I'm not really sure. Um, you know, what's this relating to, or hey, this looks good, could we implement it for Farmington, is this something we should consider? Like, get those out to us as you're seeing them, you don't have to hold them. To the next one, because our next meeting now is three weeks away, it's not a two-week cycle, it's a three-week cycle. So, um. Get them to us, because then Garrett and I can. Can work on it so that it's ready then for everybody. To see prior to the next meeting, so. You know, again, everybody, their breaks in time or moments in time are different, when I, I don't care when you're sending me the email, we'll get them. So we'll figure it out on our end and get it synthesized. Um, so that we can. Get information back out, um, so please don't feel like you have to wait from meeting to meeting.
Thank you, none of it makes sense.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Uh, so I live and die by project schedules, I was just curious if there's some. Some kind of project schedule, we have six months to make this happen, if we could. Back into hitting certain incrementals along the way, I don't know what that would look like.
I. I can try, um, my best. The the best I've got right now is that this, these first. Let's say two months are information gathering and disseminating. Um. The next two months is. Going to be. Synthesizing and trying to figure out. Collectively, the direction for Farmington and the final months. How we want that to implement, be implemented and set, um. Priorities, and and I think to, to Scott's point, one of his, you know, questions to me had been, you know, how aggressive do we need to be? We don't. It it's, the point is not to implement ten things. Right? I'd rather implement one or two. Let it percolate for a a year-ish. Did it work, what were, what were the results, how is it, like, have some metrics to it? And then hit the list, say, okay, this was our priority, but if we've got a priority list of like eight to. Eight, whatever, eight to ten things, whatever it happens to be, you know, that's where I'd like us to be kind of by May. Uh, we've done all our information gathering in the first two months, we've kind of synthesized data in the next. Two months and got a formulation of, okay, this is what I think. We need to do so we can set a priority list. And then, again, that regulation rating then gets left to to Garrett and I, then to go, obviously, come back to you folks and go, yeah, that aligns with what we talked about. Or no, we want to tweak it a little bit. Um, but that's kind of the general. Sense that I've got, um. Does that help, Matt?
Yeah, I, yeah, that makes sense, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, high level, I agree. It sounds like it's doable, right, if we stick to that. Um, I think it's super exciting that we're doing this. Uh, in our town and. Hopefully, the rest of the state, country follows, it is important, habit housing. Um, do, uh, Shannon, do you have conversations with CJ or Kathy, our town manager, about this or?
Um, so obviously, before the moratorium went into place, I I, that was not done in a vacuum. Um, it did, I know, for you folks, kind of seemed to come out of. Of left field with, I guess, the. Uh, my best explanation is that if if it was, uh, it didn't do me any good to have it out on the street. And then have thirty applications come in to try to get under, under that, so. Um, but no, it was, it it was done with um Kathy knowing, and then Kathy had that conversation with CJ. Um. And so, yes, this evolution, I mean, I I typically meet with Kathy twice a month, um. I know, sometimes more frequently, it just kind of depends on the month, but. I typically meet with her twice a month and we run through. Every, everything planning department related. TPZ, inland wetlands, et cetera, so, um, this will get touched on. And then she then disseminates it to, um. CJ.
Yeah.
Occasionally, I get a call from him directly.
Sure. And Rose, Rose knows, obviously.
Rose is aware, yep, Rose is aware, um, a- and. Given that this is more residentially focused.
Yeah.
It, it's uh less direct involvement with Rose from that standpoint. Um, we typically collaborate more on our business, industrial, commercial.
Yeah.
Um, projects, but she is absolutely aware of this.
Okay. Any, like, hugely negative comments, or have you received anything?
No, um, in fact, town manager's office was quite supportive, understood.
Okay.
The need for the pause in order for us to take the time to do exactly what we're doing.
Awesome.
So, um, yeah.
Very good.
Okay.
Wow, I'm so glad I'm on this board.
So.
I'm sure we're, we are too, now, that's awesome, thank you.
Definitely some work cut out for us, so, uh, anyone else have any other questions for me this evening related to our? Residential review?
Well, I just want to touch on what Matthew said, I agree, like, so when I opened up this material. Um, actually, I I do better reading it on paper, so I like to print stuff and when I'm counting all the pages, I'll, I'll use, so my head. You know, it was spinning, so like. I guess what he's trying to say is we need, we need goals, right, so we're all on the same page, and we could have the most productive meetings, like, what is our goal? Or, are, you said our next meeting is three weeks from now, um. Is it realistic, should we, are we going through? Obviously, we want to go through as much of this and do as much as we can, um, as quickly as we can, I guess, right, because the timeframe is short and there's a lot to cover. Um. But I guess that, I guess that's it, right, so I don't know how, I don't know how to explain what I'm trying to say, other than, how do we come into the next meeting, you know, what is our goal realistically? Um, question, it's like a statement, I guess, just a.
That's right, one, one million pages you gotta read, I memorize.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's our, what's the syllabus?
So this, so I guess, when in doubt, come back to the Affordable Housing Plan and the objectives and strategies. Right? So that that sets the metric for the direction that we are looking to to trend towards. Um. And it's reading enough about inclusionary zoning and the Fee and Lou program. Pros and cons to start to understand, is this something that we think we want to implement in Farmington? And if so, what are the parameters under which we wanna implement it? And I guess same with respect to the light-touch development. Is that something that we wanna look at for Farmington? Which is different than that inclusionary zoning and Fee and Lou program, right? And again, then what are, we we need to start to look at what are the parameters, right? Everything we do is by lot size and by density, how many, you know, how many houses per acre or how many apartments per acre are that we allow in our regulation? The, and it ties directly to to parking requirements then and impervious coverage. Some of the setback requirements, we can start to play around with. Um, I'm not necessarily as concerned with that, because we're, we're gonna have to start to to look at if um, if we're gonna allow um, allow a a higher density in the middle of an R forty zone on a kind of a one-off, then what do we want that to look like next to other single-family R forty homes, right? So we now need to start to figure out what are our, how does that transition and other buffer requirements and whatnot? But I think we need to look at density, is it, is is a four-family appropriate or we wanna leave it a single-family or? So that's why I want it, we had to start with a knowledge base of what is inclusionary zoning, what is Fee and Lou? What is light-touch? And and then tie that back as you're reading it, kind of go back to these objectives and strategies. I'm gonna get you the information on our housing authority. Um, so you understand what our housing authority does and what the housing trust fund is responsible for. And then it starts to, I think, put the, some of those pieces together, um, so that we understand, okay, what do we, what do we? Where do we wanna start to go with some of this? I think as as um, everyone starts to peel the layers of this onion, there's gonna be questions that kind of naturally percolate, which is why I don't want you to wait the three weeks. Get them to me so Garrett and I can start to answer them. And I think we're gonna, I I think some of this is gonna start to organically kind of shift sift out for us, that we're really like, no, okay. This, this, whatever X, Y, and Z doesn't, isn't where we think Farmington should be. But this other thing that I read, that's, you know, whatever, somebody's doing in Milwaukee, that looks, that looks good. And I think we could morph that to make that fit and and it would check whatever these boxes for Farmington. So those objectives and strategies for now are are really kind of our guide. And it's trying to use these tools. Um. Again, the inclusionary zoning, the Fee and Lou, um, the light-touch development. Um, there may be others, right? As we're reading through stuff, we may stumble upon something else that's got a different new fancy name. We're like, okay, well, let's take a look at it and and read up on it and see, does that fit into into one of these things? So that's the ultimate goal, is to try to figure out, can we do something to try to check some of these boxes?
Um, Shannon, can we say, can, like, at the next meeting, can we focus on inclusionary zone? And then the next one, Fee and Lou, and the next one, or you don't think that makes sense?
Well, the inclusionary zone and Fee and Lou go together. They go, so if you're talking about one, we should talk about the other.
Okay.
We can, we absolutely can. Um, at the same time, I don't wanna preclude uh questions.
Right, right, right. I agree. But I feel like there should be like a focus. And if we go somewhere, hopefully, we won't go crazy off topic, but you know what I mean?
Yep.
But that may lead us to things that we haven't talked about, but um, I don't know. Do you guys think it would be helpful? If at the next meeting, that's what we tackle, inclusionary and Fee and Lou?
That makes sense to me. I kind of like that idea of a goal.
Sure. Does that help, Patrick?
Yeah, yeah, of course. So so, yeah, because we have, we have, um. So we we have the inclusionary zone and then uh the other one is the light touch, right? So those are two different, kind of two different ways to come at it, right? If I'm understanding correctly.
Yes.
Also try to, I guess, we could, we could focus on one. I don't know if three, you know, maybe that's not enough to accomplish in three weeks. Or, you know, again, are we focusing on both? But that's, that's, I guess, my point is, the point I'm making is almost to set a goal so that we, we're all on the same page, right? And I think the questions that we ask, if if they're spread amongst us as well, right? So Shannon, if 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 a commissioner sends you a question and, you know, you answer it maybe publicly to all of us, it kind of might help somebody else or answer somebody else's, right?
Absolutely. That's the whole point, right?
Yeah, right. Okay. So, yeah, and that's, that's what I was getting at, is is it's almost like um setting that goal, right? So do you do, just use, just focus on one and and do we have enough time? Or do we really study both and try to figure out before the next meeting, you know, which way we're leaning or, you know, so?
We've got time. We can focus on the, for the next three weeks, if you want to focus on the inclusionary zone and Fee and Lou and then if um you know, if if needed, then you can, you can certainly start to roll into the the light touch. Um, Desegregate Connecticut, I think, is going, I think she said, oh, hang on, wanna check. Yeah, I should have a date from them next uh by the end of this week.
Okay.
As to what meeting they're coming to, but it doesn't really matter. I think we could still focus on one. And even if the Desegregate Connecticut's coming to the next meeting, I think that's fine. Um. So uh, that's fine. So focus on inclusionary zoning and Fee and Lou. Um, as, send us questions. As you're starting to look at it, if you're, I know for some of the APA uh references, if you can't get to them and you want access to them, let us know which ones you want and Garrett will get them for us.
This was so good. Anyone else? Tom, it was great. Great, great discussion. Thank you, Shannon, for agreeing to do all this work for us, you know, Garrett, of course, and Sandy.
Yeah.
I love it. All right, um, so we're good with the work session or, right, working session? So we have any questions for Shannon regarding projects in town? We're good. Okay. Um, and I guess we, the last thing before us is to approve minutes from January ninth? Yep. Ooh, I can read.
All right, yeah, so uh Patrick Carey, I make the motion to approve the minutes of the January ninth, two thousand twenty-three Town Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Listen for a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. This was awesome. Thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned, eight eighteen.
Good night, you guys.
Thank you.